The foot pursuit. As the suspect came upon Officer Cologne, the suspect began to shoot at him, forcing Officer Cologne to return fire, appearing to wound the suspect. The suspect sat down, but instead of complying with officers' commands, the suspect pointed his firearm at the officers, compelling them to respond accordingly. With the threat seemingly neutralized, the officers immediately began performing.
Kimberly, I'm going to roll in a minute.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
You want us up here now?
Uh, in a minute.
Let's get started. What's going on, Brian? Okay, ready? Good morning. November 15th, 2021. Calling order, the ARPA Working Group. There is no need to call forum because there will be no votes taken, starting a minute late, a couple minutes late because of the work of the Municipal Services and Properties Committee. So at this point, I would like to get started. On today's agenda, I know we all have the documents that Anne has been working on and John that have been circulated. The goal for today is, you know, it is November 15th, and we have to start making decisions. We have to start, you know, move to a point where we stop talking about stuff and we actually vote on things. So that is kind of the mission, the agenda for the day. Councilman, Majority Leader Blaine Griffin has been running point on most of these meetings in my absence, so I want to give him an opportunity to open up before we begin our discussion. Councilman?
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to make sure that we reiterate, the goal of today's meeting is, first of all, to recognize everybody, we've had significant work that we've done over the last four or five weeks with this working group. Also want to commend Jenny Spencer, who's Councilwoman Spencer, who's been working closely with me on really establishing an agenda and how we can get to this point. The goal of today's meeting is really to try to synthesize this document so that we can finalize the legislation that we're going to start to take through our committee process. We know that there are points that have had general agreement, and we know that there are areas that we have to have a little bit more discussion. But right now, what we have on the table is 843-2021. That's what we're actually discussing. We know that we have had a rigorous committee hearing through safety, and we know that there are some other things that are on here regarding health and municipal services. So what we want to do today is hear from Annie Tilly, our staff researcher, and what she could do is basically go through the justification on how she actually came up with these numbers based on what the administration has given us. And then, Mr. Chair, I know we do have members of the administration to justify or answer any questions that people may have regarding any of the parts of the legislation. So that's what we have for today. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, anyone joining us, please?
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Tilly, before--
So how was your weekend?
Yeah, I heard you had good news. I heard you got good news.
I did have a really exciting weekend, yes.
And I thought I was doing something shining you out on social media. Somebody's one-upped me, I see. But tell everybody the good news if you could.
Oh, I got engaged this weekend.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
But equally excited to be here this morning.
I hope not, but please continue.
Yes, of course. But still, very good to be here and see you all this morning. Thank you. That means a lot to me and my partner, Andrew. But today, this morning, here to talk about a continuation of the discussion we've been having around these ARPA dollars. As you remember, last week, we went through a spreadsheet that compiled what we'll term a wish list of all the things council members, you know, might have liked to see or would like to prioritize for the ARPA dollars and spending. So going through that document again, we kind of highlighted things that maybe we agreed upon, maybe things that weren't eligible with the ARPA dollars or things that might not happen right away. So from that document that we all went through, I was able to go through, and this should be on your tablets, and put together kind of our areas of agreement, right? You know, based on those recommendations, requests, wish list items, you know, where do we agree in terms of councils of body, councils of body with the administration, councils of body with many of our advocacy organizations who either provided proposals or came before us, you know, to present their ideas? So kind of looking at that as a whole is what we have here. So it's a summary of two pages. So again, looking at this lens, we're looking at the program or the policy, what is the proposed cost? If that was given to us, the potential impact, so a little bit more of that context of what does it aim to do and who could it impact? And then lastly, the status. So many of the things that have been requested exist either in legislation in 843-2021, previous legislation that council has proposed, and then there are a few items that, should you want to move forward, that would need its own legislation. So that is where we are here in this document. So I'll start with the areas of agreement under council and administration unless there are any questions before I move forward.
Please proceed.
Okay. Wonderful. So these are not in any particular order. These are mostly in the order that, you know, I was able to run through them. So we'll start with expanding the storefront program. This came through ordinance 843-2021 from the administration, looking at $250,000 for five additional stores. I won't spend too much time dwelling on these because I know the administration has a lot more information to share than I do. We also have the demolition of residential and commercial properties where the administration's looking at $15 million to help stabilize blighted neighborhoods. And the specific numbers again, I want to say it's roughly in the ballpark of like 330 residential structures and like 11 commercial structures. Expansion of the surveillance cameras, that would be rolling out the next phase of our surveillance cameras, not necessarily a new, you know, a new allotment. So that looks like $4.4 million. Senior home repair, $3.6 million for 200 homes. Moving into more of the safety items that we've again seen in 843-2021 and in our safety committee. EMS vehicles and equipment, $7.8 million. Looking at things like the COTS, the cardiac monitors, ambulances, SUVs. Fires, equipment and vehicles for $3.6 million. Many of these things, I think, have big names and are long, so I will skip over those, but they are very important to their training and their apparatuses. Animal control and equipment, looking at some additional vehicles. Our police vehicles and equipment now. Here at this section, I know there were some areas of concern and areas where we wanted a little more information and context about what those specific asks were, so I've broken it down here into vehicles and equipment, looking at things more like, you know, sedans, SUVs, bikes, you know, mountain bikes, the canine dogs, more technology-based solutions. And then looking below there would be like the police SWAT and riot gear. I know there were a lot of questions there. So $1.3 million for that, I believe it's called a bear cat vehicle, the protective equipment for event response, the riot helmets and the solo shields. Moving down on that list that we're looking at, again, looking at areas of agreement with the council and administration. Neon, which we know unfortunately faced a fire earlier this year, so looking at some operational support. The Allen Estates housing development, the Warner and Swayze affordable housing development, and then the Woodhill Choice neighborhood housing development. So again, all of those things that, you know, these areas of agreement, it do exist in ordinance 843-2021. Again, I'll let the administration kind of provide a little more information there. So then going down to areas of agreement where council, the administration, and some of our advocacy organizations all express a preference to prioritize, we're looking at the Lead Safe Cleveland Coalition, specifically that Lead Safe Housing Fund. We know Lead Safe Cleveland Coalition made the request for $17.5 million. The administration had proposed $5 million. So that $5 million is reflected in 843-2021. They're also looking at providing grants and low-interest loans for down payment assistance. The administration had proposed $3.1 million and $1.5 million for new home purchases as well as multifamily home purchases. Cleveland Neighborhood Progress had proposed $3.3 million for 235 new home purchases, again reflected in 843-2021. We're looking at an expansion of home repair programs that would be for nonseniors. So I think this is where we have previously discussed about people who are not primarily serviced by the senior home repairs or may not typically fall under those traditional financing terms. Administration proposing $3.6 million and CMP proposing 8.3. And then lastly, the expansion of rental assistance, administration proposing 8.3, or excuse me, $4.5 million and CMP proposing $6.6 million. So that rounds out with our advocacy organizations. And then looking at, you know, perhaps this is not the purpose of today, but I think for the sake of kind of going over, you know, all of those requests and where they fell, the council and advocacy, where we were agreement there, this would most likely need further legislation. But looking at broadband access, which we know was passed through ordinance 691-2021, so kind of check that box off there. Looking at the expansion of right to council, which, to the chair, correct me if I'm wrong, that might be on the agenda soon.
We have legislation to be introduced tonight and hopefully to be passed next week.
Okay, wonderful. I will update this when we get there. We also have the support to the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, which went through 681-2021. But then looking at some of the ones where we have not legislated yet, University Settlement, you know, was seeking $250,000 for some operational support. And then two of our domestic violence advocacy organizations in the community, Journey Center for Safety and Healing, and then Cleveland Rape Crisis, both did make separate proposals for either $700,000 or $2.5 million, depending on their needs. So that is kind of the laundry list of, well, not laundry list. This is the condensed list of, you know, these wish lists and requests where we have agreement, you know, things that we might be able to prioritize. And I would note, looking at the total of what the cost of all of this is, you know, keeping in mind that we do want to stay within our means for this first tranche of, you know, what we have to allocate based off of the revenue reallocation, you know, those kinds of things. Looking at the low end, if we funded everything on this list, it would be 107.3 million. And then if we funded everything to the maximum amount, you know, we had some differences in requests for funding, looking at a top end of 125.3 million. So that is the document, and I will stop there.
Okay. So a couple of things that you said, I want to make sure everybody kind of heard loud and clear. At one point, you said the first tranche. There is going to be a second, you know, tranche of money that is coming in May, I believe. So that is coming. And as we, as you look at where most of these proposals live, it is in ordinance number 843-21, which is if we are, you know, because we need to get something done, the course of accomplishment is through, is, in my opinion, is through the amendment of 843-21. But that's a lot easier said than done and get into completion. One thing that you raised, that I just had a quick question about, where'd we go? Okay, so for providing grants for, it's on page, it's the, providing grants, low-income loans for down payment assistance. If the top proposal is 3.1 plus 1.5, 4.6, how do you get more homes out of 3.3, the 3.3 million request? Do they justify that in some way? Is there some--
No, that information, to the chair--
Self-report.
--that information was not provided in the line item, information that the administration had sent over previously. So we just have the outcomes, which is 125 and 40.
Okay. And that's based, that's your reporting, what was reported to you--
Yes.
--on how these dollars could be--
Chair, that is correct.
--understood. Okay, I have, a lot of you have been looking at this, so I don't have any further questions. At this point, I do want to go to questions, and I see the administration is here to answer things, so I want to start with Councilwoman Spencer, and I believe I saw Councilman Plenzik and Councilman Slife. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few clarifying questions, one on the point you just raised, and so through the chair to Ms. Tilly. I think we have the document right now labeled as areas of agreement, but I think in some ways, some of that is a little bit premature in the sense of we have yet to hear testimony. I know we have the administration here right now. We have development planning and sustainability tomorrow, but we actually have not, to the council president's question, we have not yet heard detailed descriptions of how some of the community development or economic development dollars would actually be deployed and why they differ from what some of the advocacy groups are putting forward. So I really just want to point out to my colleagues that there's a little bit more work to do in some of the areas. Some have been pretty well studied at this point. I know safety has been well studied at this point, but I think the CD and ED items, we really haven't gotten the full briefing on those yet. So I appreciate Anne, or Ms. Tilly, wanting to distill this down to something we can all digest, but I think we have a little bit more of a road ahead of us on some of these items. And then my second point is really a question to the chair, which is, in the event that I concur that a lot of elements of 843-2021 should proceed, and we all have an appetite to move and not sit on things further, we want to get going, in the event that there's certain elements that may not, there may not be consensus around, what would be the process to amend, or how does that go forward?
Ordinance number 843 has been amended, or excuse me, it has been introduced. It is under discussion. It would be amending, 843 would be the vehicle, and if there is additional, it would be a matter of crafting a separate ordinance that could be introduced through committee and passed in the next, after tonight, we'll have two more meetings after tonight. So that would be the road ahead. So I see the amendment of 843 as the most plausible path to getting anything done.
And then, Mr. Chair, do you anticipate amendments, should they be introduced in DPS or in finance on Monday?
In DPS.
Okay. So that would be tomorrow.
Yes. I, you know, we can amend in finance, but as a chair of finance, I prefer things to be as buttoned down as possible by the time we get there, especially since we've seen this coming, you know--
I understand that.
--mile away.
And I do plan, I'm not a member of DPS, however, I do plan to attend tomorrow. Are non-members of a committee able to make a motion?
No. Just kidding, of course you are.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
On that point--
But you couldn't vote on that motion.
Correct. That is correct. But you can make it, yeah, you can make the motion, and a member of the committee can put it forth, and the committee could vote on it.
Thank you for the clarification.
On that point-- Councilman Brinkatelli, you had a point on that?
Thank you, just clarifying through the chair to Councilwoman, so your point that you made, that the initial cover sheet showing council and administration agreement, the points that you raised, Neon, Allen Estates, Warner Swayze, Woodhill Choice have not been heard. Right.
Okay. Councilwoman, are you, do you have further questions?
Just one response to Councilman Brinkatelli. In addition, just some of the broader brush ED and CD items have not yet been heard. On the second page, for example, some of the home repair and/or council president pointed out the low-interest loans for down payment assistance where there's a discrepancy between the administration and what advocacy is putting forward. So I would just say, that's a pretty big bucket of work, especially if DPS is going to try to take it all on tomorrow, but I'm looking forward to the discussion and to the DEFT leadership of the committee chair.
Thank you very much. DEFT, that's a good word. I'm going to start using that in my everyday conversations. I have to figure out what it means first. Councilman Plenzik?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my humble colleagues, and to Anne, if you could provide to us the, because I did not, I personally did not submit any Ward-based projects, but I know there have been some submitted based on the list that we have received. Would I'd like to know what specifically wards those are connected to, and I'd like to know if they are nonprofit agencies or organizations, and if they have received any other city funding, so we can get a better picture as it pertains to what's going to be presented to us for the final vote. So again, I'd like to know which groups are nonprofit, if there's been any other city money put into their project, and if it's a Ward base, what Ward they are attached to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank Councilman Plenzik. Councilman Charles Slife?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Councilmember Spencer for her line of questions, because I think one of my initial points was just that clarification on what our steps moving forward are. You know, I think it's going to be really incumbent on the administration to answer some specific questions, just because there's so much that is likely to be even an amended 843-21, and we don't have the ability to do like a line item veto as members. So to make sure that we are comfortable with the parts that are making us a little uncomfortable for the good of the larger piece of legislation. But just a couple, a quick, and maybe this could be filed, Mr. President, under silly questions, but--
We got a big file of that.
--for example, the senior home repair, the 200 homes, is this legislation prescriptive about how the administration achieves that? And the onus of the question is, I've expressed in the past some concerns about existing programs, their capacity, the administrative burdens that people have to go through. So I'm not philosophically by any means opposed to 200 senior home repairs, but I do have some questions about the ability to achieve it. So in passing this legislation, are we, are we prescribing that they expand the existing program, or does there still allow for there to be an ability to create a separate program or a differently structured program that could perhaps be more effective?
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know the answer?
I do not. I would defer to the administration.
Chief Dumas, do you know the answer to that question? The question is whether these 200 homes are going to be part of AFib, whether they can be part of SHAP, are they going to be part of an existing program, or are we--
Neither myself nor Director Wackers will know that, and of course, we're having that hearing tomorrow.
Okay.
And so he'd be able to determine what program, if it's currently part of another program or if it's a different program.
Okay.
That's the question.
Thank you, and I will make sure that question's asked tomorrow. And I just use that, that specific line as an example. I think we need to be asking questions, make sure we're not just philosophically in favor of something, but that we're sure that it's actionable and that it's going to meet our expectations. Just a couple other quick questions through President Kelly to Ms. Tilly. The five additional stores for storefront, is that, that's five citywide? Just five?
What line, I'm sorry?
The very first one.
The very first, expanding storefront.
Yes.
To the councilman through the chair, I do not have that information. I would defer to the administration.
Okay, that's another, we could probably find, you know, that, no offense to my, not to attack my colleague to my left, but given the amount of businesses opening in Ward III, that could probably be spent in Ward III in five minutes, so I want to make sure that we're not, the spirit of these dollars of being impactful across the city holds. Mr. President, last Monday night, I recall there being legislation introduced for the Neon rebuild. Here it's listed as part of ordinance 843-2021. Is that a typo? Are there two separate Neon pieces?
Yeah, so with Neon, we weren't sure, because Neon is a very important part of the, you know, it's a very important element to get done. So we didn't know, when we weren't sure where 843 was going to be, it was introduced as a standalone, as if needed.
Okay, understood.
So yes, it was introduced.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And obviously, that'll resolve itself. And then the final thing that I was surprised not to see on the list is something, and correct me if I'm just missing, related utilities. I know, from speaking with some of the colleagues, I know there's been conversations about, are we able to use, and correct me if this is ineligible use, but ARPA dollars to help people who are behind on their utility bills to be brought current?
I don't know.
To the councilman through the chair, yes, utilities assistance, I believe, would be ineligible use under ARPA dollars, however, that was not proposed by the administration in 843-2021, which is what I had received.
Perfect, okay.
And, yeah.
Thank you. Let's, as a council, let's circle back to that. I will, my personal opinion is that for all the work that we've done as a city to, you know, predatory lending, payday lenders, you end up on a utilities payment plan, and it kind of feels like the same thing. So if there's an ability for us to help Cleveland families get current with their bills, I think that would go a long way in helping them overcome a lot of their other financial challenges. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Mooney, did you have additional questions, or did you just have a point on that? Okay. Councilman Brinkatelli?
Well, first, on the point that Councilman Slife raises, I think we're, part of the utilities came under some of the rent relief that we had set aside previously on a separate piece that is not coming from our dollars. And I think, I forget what the dollar amount was, like 13 million, but we can get that clarifying with Director Wackers tomorrow. And part of the discussion we've talked about earlier is, are there separate sources of ARPA dollars and relief dollars that are coming that aren't part of our tranche of funds? And I also wanted to raise a point, I know we're going to hear the sale of South High School to the city for public safety, for a training program for EMS, fire, police, and our cadets program, as well as school district for their ongoing. And it was raised by Director Kerry Howard at the meeting that there's $5 million that's set aside from the current funding bonding for the new headquarters, and it's part of that tranche of last 65 million dollars that we put in. But the $5 million might cover the roof, and we know, as was stated by Capital Projects, when South High was being considered as a police headquarters location, that it needs significant repair. And that was one of the reasons why it was taken off the table, based on the amount of repairs that it was needed. And, but this site is eligible for ARPA dollars, and I know we've heard from many of our safety forces about making sure we have money as we take that project on, to be able to get up and running, because they want to put a class in there at the beginning of the year, which, again, I'm looking at how do we carve out ARPA dollars for the training center is critically important. And as we have, and I think as Councilwoman Spencer noted, that this last set of categories of the nonprofit support, Neon, Allen, Woodhill, Choice, Warner, really wasn't part of the council areas of agreement overall. It was, may need to be part of the other category, as we're now drilling down and having those hearings tomorrow and days forward. So that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Councilman Brinkatelli. Councilman Anthony Hairston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the list here, at our last hearing this past Monday, there was a number of other projects that were mentioned by our chairman, Mr. Griffin, who was highlighting some of the projects that were not shown on the document at that time. And as I looked at this document, I see there's still some phenomenal projects that are happening in other parts of the war. And one of the projects that came up was in St. Clair Superior, which is also a catalytic project for that community, not only for the most northern war, but for that neighborhood as a whole, which is the Arc Tainer Project on E72 Street, which is a new multifamily development along E72 that bumps up to the, where the CHIR study is happening, along with the infield housing project is there. And I know there was a request for some support for that project, but I do not see it on there. In fact, I believe that it does qualify for ARPA dollars, because the financing and other aspects of the project was affected by COVID, which is the reason it had not moved forward. So I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Griffin, and to Anne, what do we need to do to-- and Mr. Griffin, and to Anne, what do we need to do to, bring that project forward to, that is a part of this list, and, you know, looking forward to support from this, because it is a, that, that area where it sits is an area that has been under, under vested and has really have not seen any true support for quite some time. And that project there would be for sure catalytic for that entire community. And, you know, we're looking to try to bridge that project with a few others there, and to have support for this would be, would be great. And so I will kick it back to the chairman or, and to Anne, about what we need to do to see this, be a part of this document. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
To the chair, to the councilmen, I would just note that, you know, I think with that, with a lot of those catalytic product, projects, we had some questions around what kinds of financing, you know, shovel readiness, those kinds of things that we had, which is why I left, you know, almost all of them off, but glad to hear your input, you know, the eligibility. So I'm more than happy to, you know, add those projects back in as we learn more.
That's a lot.
So I can update this list to reflect.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Anne. Also, that is one aspect that I failed to mention, that this project is shovel-ready. It has received full support from the Design Review Committee, this City Planning Commission, and it is ready to go. So this is something that they have been working on, but unfortunately, due to the pandemic, they had to halt moving forward. Again, this is not just a benefit for one neighborhood, this is a benefit for that entire St. Clair Superior communities. And these developers are minorities, which they have, they checked the boxes on each one of those categories, on why this is something that should be supported and will qualify for these dollars. So looking forward to my colleagues, the discussion on this. I'm sure I have other colleagues who will represent the St. Clair Superior neighborhood, who understands the impact to have these type of projects that can be a benefit for the entire community there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Polenick, do you have a point, or do you want me back on the list?
I just had, I probably have a general question. I'll wait.
Okay, I'll put you back on the list then?
On that point.
On, on the point, Councilman, Councilman Griffin?
On that point, can we have the administration or Director Ebersol make sure that he kind of gives us the guidelines of how these actual decisions were made on which projects were actually, should be included in this round? Because it may be that some may need to be included in this round, some may be, need to be included in the next round. But if we cannot get that answer today, I would respectfully ask if we could have Director Ebersol provide that criteria, so that we could at least have guidelines, so everybody can know. Because some projects are time-sensitive, that if you cannot get them done by November or December of this year, then there may be financing that is lost and other things. So it would be great if we actually had a guideline for how those catalytic projects are made. And everybody, I want to keep in mind that this is also about how are we stabilizing our economy. So a lot of these have to meet several different criteria in order to actually qualify. So if we could get that, that would be helpful, so that we know that we're not just trying to pass out projects to different wards, that it really is meeting a strict criteria.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that was, that was the point, that, because it says, ARPA council areas of agreement, 1112. Who, who came up with this list, this final list here?
Let me get back there.
So, on that point, if I could, real quick, all that this list was, is that things that came across the radar screen, that Ms. Tilly actually synthesized and put together in a document. So if it's not on here, it's because pretty much either nobody has heard about the project, or it didn't reach the level of scrutiny that actually it qualified as an emergency expenditure needed under ARPA. And that's the reason why. There's still an opportunity to have conversation, but it would be good if the administration gave us the guidelines that were utilized in order to have these projects, because it might give us more clarification.
Was it, what is, was it a subcommittee of this group? I mean, who actually, Anne didn't come up with this list by herself? Who came up with this list?
Once again, it was not a subcommittee. These were just the only things that were seen, that were submitted for consideration. And once again, these were basically, and maybe once again, Director Ebersol can give us guidance, after doing, from what I understand, after doing the scan of all of the projects that were shovel-ready, that met the criteria of ARPA dollars, that were catalytic projects that need to focus on areas, that that's how these projects were selected. Now, if there are other projects that were missed, like our container that Councilman Hairston is just bringing up, then we need to see if it meets that criteria. Because everybody's project and everybody's ward does not meet the criteria for ARPA dollars. And some may need to be kicked to next year and actually put in the next tranche of dollars that we have. But that's something that I would ask respectfully of the administration of how these projects were actually extrapolated out.
Well, that's not satisfactory to me. I want to know, who came up with the list? Who came up with this list? It wasn't Anne Tilly. Who came up with this list?
To the councilmen, through the chair. So from our wish list spreadsheet that we discussed last week, I simply went through, kind of combing it through, and said, okay, these are the items that more than one party, whether it be council members, the administration or advocacy, proposed and identified that said, these are the things that more than one body said, this should be a priority, this is how we should spend. So all of this document is, is just a reflection of things that, you know, multiple people checked off.
Okay.
So that, that's all this document is.
So we're not going to be voting on this document?
No.
That's what I want to make clear on. Okay. I want to be very clear on. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But on that point, Mr. Chair-
Please.
We, this, we do need to make a determination, because once we have 843 in front of DPS, it is going to start to be discussed. And that's the reason why we're trying to, you know, boil this down, so that we could have a piece that we need to discuss. And that's when we make a decision as a body of what we're going to keep in, or what we need to take out, what we need to amend, or whatever. And I think, I think Chief Dumas also has a-
Do you want Director Ebersol, we're here.
Yeah.
Do you want us to explain the criteria?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I mean, looking at the handful of projects-
Can he join us at the table if we could?
All right. Good morning. Looking, I mean, looking at the handful of projects, and without going through them one by one unless you want me to, these are projects that we have seen, been involved with, underwritten over the course of the last year or more that have gotten stuck and, and need this additional stimulus, for lack of a better word, to get across the finish line. So, I mean, just for one example, Warner and Swayze Project is a project that we've been looking at trying to get done for five, six, seven, eight years across the finish line. And so this was, this was an opportunity to provide some of the funding to do that, and, and would have that impact on, on meeting some of the goals too. Affordable housing being a goal of the ARPA plan. So, I mean, that's, that's another issue where some of these run into, you run into eligibility determinations on those. So made sure they fit the eligibility projects that we've been working on for quite some time, that are ready to go, that needed this extra, extra boost after we underwrote them.
Well, then, Mr. Chairman, I had a question of the director. And you can put me on the list, whatever.
Okay, so do you want, is it on this point, or do you want me to-
Well, yeah, so, just on, on his presentation.
Sure.
So Warner, the Warner Swayze, Swayze Project, is that a for-profit group?
That, that will be developed by a for-profit entity as an affordable housing mixed-use development.
Okay, is that a loan or a grant?
That is a grant.
For a for-profit organization?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kerry McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. Just a, a couple of comments. I appreciate this, this meeting today. You know, looking at, in the context of in five years and 10 years, is the financial lifeblood of our everyday resident better because of these investments or not? I just want to say that I'm just concerned that the 200 homes for home, senior home repair, for example, or, you know, scrolling down the money for lead paint, or for the other economic tools like down payment assistance and those rental assistance, for example, I'm just concerned that those are not high enough where they need to be. You know, to me, I think, again, I think we've got an opportunity here with the senior home repair, Councilman Bashir Jones, really spoke to the expanding of AMI, and how do we really reach more seniors in our community. So I just wanted to put my two cents on that, that I'd like to see that expanded, so that we could really reach more folks in our community, age in place, you know, and to repair their homes, so that after this money's expended, you know, we can look around and see a noticeable difference for our seniors in our community. And also looking at, you know, possibly increasing the AMI, which I would assume would need additional funding. So again, just wanted to put my two cents in there when it comes to investing in our people through their homes. I think that we could do more in this bill to do that. And I understand that that means you got to take something away from somewhere, but that's the decision, of course, that this council has to make. So I just wanted to say, I think we should expand senior home repair, as well as the other economic development tools like down payment assistance that can get people into homeownership. As we heard in the table a few weeks ago, you know, some folks pay more in rent than they would in a mortgage, but they just can't make that down payment. So what are those types of tools that can actually build wealth in our community, where wealth has not been built for decades, due to all the systemic issues, of course, that this council's aware of? So wanted to put my two cents in there and appreciate this meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bashir Jones?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Councilman McCormick brought up a, a really important point, which is, I, I had an event the other day, where we brought in about 300 seniors, you know, from all across the city. And some of the biggest concerns is exactly what Councilman McCormick brought up, which is housing. And our elders who are aging out of these massive homes in, in Glenville and Collinwood and Huff. And a lot of the senior living institutions have long lists, long lists. And unfortunately, you have our elders who are living in these homes, and, and no one, no one is there to, to check up on them. I've had many situations in the past four years of, of elders being found in, in their homes. So providing resources that will assist, I think is very important. Councilman Hairston brought up a good point as well, in regards to 172nd. I, I support that. I'm trying my best, Mr. President. There's certain conversations that I can have right now, but there's certain things that this body is going to have to figure out after January. So I'm, 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 I'm trying to strike a balance between fighting for what I believe at the moment, and there's certain things that the body is going to have to figure out a little bit later. But the projects that, that I see here, this Hitchcock Center for Women, which is not really in, I don't, I don't think it's in Ward Seven, is a little bit outside of it, I believe. But it's a very important, very, very important organization that needs assistance. I got a chance to go there every Christmas as a councilperson and bring some toys and stuff to the women and children there. So it's a very impactful place. I'm, I'm excited about seeing 9410 Huff being a part of the conversation. Anyone knows, if you grew up in this area at all, this building has been abandoned for years. Actually, I can remember when a, a young child was, was, fell off the banister of this, of this, of this, of this place. So it, it needs support. So I'm happy to see that support. And I'm really happy to see NEON. I think that NEON, for, for us who grew up in this neighborhood, NEON has always been our hospital. That's been the hospital that we go to, you know what I'm saying? I know Hairston knew about that, Collinwood. Yeah, Collinwood helps, and that's where we, that's where we got, got our shots and stuff from. But, you know, they turned in a proposal for 7 million and was given 2 million. And not only do they need the assistance to fix up their building, but they have a lot of services that comes out of this place. And, and remember, you know, for everyone that's here, everyone doesn't like to go to the hospital. So NEON presents a place where people can feel comfortable in, in going to and get the services that they need. So I look forward to having that conversation to figure out how we can assist them a little bit more than those couple of dollars, which is beneficial. But, and in closing, you know, Councilman Polenick, you know, has brought up something. But as I went through, as I went through the ARPA, there's a lot of great programming on there. Anyone that has been doing this work, you know, unfortunately, everybody's not going to get it, but Councilman McCormick brings up a great point, which is, how do we make sure that this, this lottery of resources, because we don't want to get these resources again. I mean, to get these resources again mean that we still impoverished. So that means that we didn't take the resources and utilize it in the way that we're supposed to utilize it. So we don't want to, if we get a billion dollars again next, in the next 10 years, that means that we are still in the same place that we were in 10 years prior. So I just want to say to, to all of my, my council colleagues, that this is a heavy responsibility, and we're not going to be able to achieve it all. We're just not going to be able to. But it's imperative that we all fight for what we truly believe can have an impact. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman, do you have a point on that, or do you want me back on the list?
I do, Mr. Chair. I, I have a point on Councilman Jones and Councilman McCormick's comments. Very moving comments from both of you. And I, I want to speak to the housing point specifically. I could not agree more that there needs to be robust housing solutions and programs coming out of these ARPA dollars. I think, not to sound like, sound trite, or to use a trite phrase, but the devil is in the details at this point. And so I think what we don't know, tomorrow's DPS hearing is the first time we're going to be hearing from Director Whackers about what's being proposed and how. And then you have advocacy proposing similar yet different, and having different numbers. So I think the, the question for me in tomorrow's hearing, and knowing that we only have so many meetings left this year, is, are we ready to go with what the administration is proposing on the housing side, or do we want to go at different, in a different direction programmatically? There was actually a great op-ed in yesterday's Plain Dealer by Tanya Minas, Mark McDermott, and Kevin Nowak about housing. So I think there's just a lot of different directions to go in. And so I couldn't agree more. I just want to emphasize my agreement that there needs to be robust housing funding in terms of our, our allocation. The question is, through what mechanism and when? And, and I think one more clarifying question to the chair, which is, we can't, we, we can, these dollars roll over. It's not like we lose the dollars if we don't allocate the first tranche by December 31. Isn't that, is that an accurate statement?
That is correct.
So I just, you know, it's, it's, this is a lot of brain workout, but I'm, I'm glad we're all in it together. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Blaine Griffin?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure, is Director Howard still around? I know that he was here.
He's in the bullpen.
Okay. Because I, I had a couple of questions about the safety component, if he's around.
I'll tag out.
Couple of things that, while we're waiting for Director Howard and to ask a couple of questions around safety. Ah, I'm getting a call after this. Somebody else got a question?
Does anybody else have a question while we're waiting for Director Howard?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess my question is, if we see something that is not listed, where do we submit that to? Do we submit it through, to Anne, through the chair, to Anne?
Um, yes. Yes, if you could submit in that fashion, that would be great. And the, what we really want to push is like, what can we get done in the next three meetings? And, you know, we want to, want to put forth an ordinance that, you know, that, that summarizes what we, what we can get done this year. And then again, there'll be plenty to do. And then there's going to be another big tranche of money that is more than twice your salary coming next year.
Got it. Well, and to the, President, some things that I noticed that were not on the list, but equally important is like expansion to the business assistance program. I didn't see that on the list. As far as housing stability, capital funding for rehabbing, I see repair, but I don't see any new construction. So I wasn't sure if that's, they're just being broad, and we'll get in the weeds of the details in DPS.
Anne, do you want to?
To the councilwoman, through the chair, yes, that is correct. This was just the, the short snippet summary that was provided to us a while back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Anything else while we're waiting for Councilman Griffin to return? Councilman Mooney?
Thank you. As long as Commissioner Howard's here, I guess I'll give him a safety question. Blaine, and why don't you- Blaine, and one, I'm just curious, as long as you're here, this 4.4 million that we've talked about for surveillance cameras, how many cameras does that equate to approximately? Do you know? Or can you explain that 4.4 million, if you're able to?
Yeah, so those cameras, I can get you the number while I sit here in a moment. I didn't bring the number of cameras on with me, but I can get that for you while I sit here.
I mean, approximately, like, how much is it per camera?
I want to, let me, let me look it up, because I don't want to misquote. I don't like to give bad numbers. And I can look, and that's something that I can look up for you while I sit here and get that for you. But it completes this next phase of the cameras throughout the city. What we did was that we, we sent out an email to some of the councilmen who have expressed an interest in the locations, to set up a meeting so that we can go over the camera locations sometime this week. So we're hoping that we can have that set up.
Repeat, through the chair, you sent out a what?
I'm sorry, an email with a, with a calendar invite for the viewing, with some discussion with our IT personnel about the cameras. And if other, if other council members are interested, what we can do is we can set up another day as well, for those interested council members as well.
Okay, so you, just so I understand, you haven't set up anything with council members yet for the cameras?
No, we, no, no. The email was, we conferred with IT as far as the day. And we got the dates, and we sent those dates out this morning.
And then, just as a curiosity, I know the commanders, there was a small amount of cameras they might be put up. I know they solicited some input from council members, the, our district commanders?
Yes.
Do you know when those are going up, roughly?
That I don't know. I'd have to ask our IT personnel for specifics.
Okay, so, but the 4.4 million, that would all go to cameras?
Yes. That's, that is the, the, you know, the installation, the running to the, to the real-time crime center. So it's, it's not just for the cameras themselves, it's for the entire, you know, installation, running power to them, running them to the real-time crime center.
Sure.
Things of that nature.
I'd just be curious to know roughly how much each camera costs, and how many cameras we think we might order, that's all.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to the director, if you could just, while we're waiting on Councilman Griffin to get back, if you could just kind of go over your police vehicles and equipment, you asked for $9 million, and there's a lot that's listed within there?
Yes.
I mean, there's over 100 vehicles in there.
Sure.
And it's only, it's only $9 million.
We, we received several questions with regard to vehicles, and we sent the, the answers. I'm not sure if that was shared, but we did address the, the, you know, SWAT vehicles, the frontline SUVs, frontline sedans, detective cars, things of that nature, and vans, buses, trucks, gators. So we did address those. So we can run, let me turn to that section. Thank you. So, do you want me to run, go line by line, Councilman?
Sure.
Okay. Well, DCO, DCO Neil here, she can run line by line and address any questions directly.
Good morning. So our first one is a SWAT rescue vehicle. We're requesting one new SWAT rescue vehicle that's used to respond to barricaded suspects. It's used approximately 30 times per year, allows for safer response, not only for the officers, but the community. Allows the SWAT officers to approach the house. In fact, we're on a SWAT call-up right now with a barricaded suspect. Our SWAT vehicle is over 20 years old. It's constantly breaking down. We actually have it towed. It's so outdated that we struggle to find parts for it. So we need to get a new one. We are purchased, we would like to purchase the Lenko Bearcat. The next vehicle is our frontline SUVs. We're requesting 45 SUVs. We have a few of them in the districts right now. These would be for the frontline cars for the districts. And the traffic unit allows the officers to, particularly up on the freeway, they're great assistance. For, and I just want to address for all our vehicles, we've put a lot of wear and tear on our vehicles, particularly during COVID. We did not have two-man cars, we had one-man cars. So we had both people driving their own separate car during COVID. So you would see, if you, if it was like, an assignment for a two-man, two-person car, then you would see two vehicles pull up when one officer got out of each car. So it, a lot of wear and tear, a lot of miles on those cars, particularly over the last year or so. So the frontline sedans, we use them to answer assignments. They also work great on the freeway when we're answering motor vehicle accidents, or vehicles that are broken down, et cetera. They allow the officers to carry more of their equipment. We, our officers actually carry more equipment now. They have to carry their large bags with their field force equipment in there, plus emergency first aid equipment, et cetera. So it's bigger vehicle allows to carry more equipment with it. And lastly, the, the car manufacturers are actually moving towards SUVs as opposed to frontline cars. Next up is our detective cars. Those are mainly our, they're unmarked, they're for the detectives either in the specialized units at the Justice Center, or actually in the bureaus at the, the detective bureaus at the districts. The detectives actually need to get out, they need to speak to the victims, they need to track down witnesses and/or suspects. Everything is not done in their office, and a lot of times victims can't come to us, we have to go to them. So our, our detectives need the ability to get out into the city and actually track down some of these people. We do not have enough detective vehicles right now, so they have to swap out or ride together. So we definitely need more of those.
Do you say, I think the question was more geared toward the $9 million? I mean, there's an awful lot in the ask, right, for the $9 million. The question is, is $9 million enough for what you're asking for under police vehicles and equipment? I mean, when you're asking for over 100 vehicles, then you're asking for 400 computers, you know, over 100 mountain bikes, you know, five dogs, computer laptops. The question is, is, when you guys break all that down, you, you know the estimates better than we, because you obviously did your research. Is $9 million, Mr. President, to the director and DCO Neil, is that, is that $9 million going to actually get us everything that you've requested?
Yes. What it does is that, it allows the division to recover from the wear and tear that COVID has placed on it, and it uplifts the division to where it, where it should be. It's actually 10.2 million total is what the, is what, what the request is. But these are, this is the assessment of the division of what it needs to bring it, bring it up to par, to best accomplish the mission of the Division of Police.
Most of these, quote, are, are from motor vehicle maintenance. Those are the prices they gave us. We can go back and double-check. The helicopter upgrade, that was actually given to us from the company. So we, we did vet the cost. We can go back and revet them, if that's a question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Basir Jones?
On that point, I think that Councilman Casey's line of questioning is very, very important. And in this attempt to try to figure out how to spend every penny, there are some things that are extremely important. And just to have traveled to the different police stations, to see some of the equipment that our officers are driving in, and not just our officers, but I'm hoping as much EMS and every, every other safety force, fire, fire department, fire houses, we need to make sure that, as Councilman Casey is saying, that, that we are putting the right dollars there. And I think that that's a good start. And I'm hoping that in the next round of dollars, you guys are focused on getting more resources there as well. But this is extremely important. And in our attempt to try to penny pinch, we need to make sure that we are taking care of the officers and those safety forces, especially as it's getting cold. I remember seeing a police, it's not funny, but the police car was trying to get up the hill during the snow, and it couldn't. And then you had a bunch of community members trying to push the police car up the hill. I'm like, how embarrassing is that, you know? And then you have police stations or districts all across the country trying to get our officers. Like, we have to be a place where, you know, we are investing in our officers, investing in fire, you know. I live right next to a fire station that had cockroaches, man. Just, I mean, how do we expect our safety forces to do the best job that they can do? And they're living in these type of conditions, right? So you can't criticize the police and then still not want to give them what they need. There got to be a balance in between the two. We got to hold ourselves accountable as, as the people who provide these resources. And at the same time, we have to hold our officers accountable. So, and once again, to what Casey said, Councilman Casey said, is that $10 million enough? And if it's not, then how are we, you know, add a couple more dollars to it? Thank you. Chair?
Thank you so much, Councilman Jones. I believe I had the floor next. I know I had to step out to take a call. I want to make sure that everybody did get the justification from Director Howard. Did everybody get the justification for the safety expenditures? If you did not, let us know. They should have come from Annie Tilly approximately Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, right? Okay, so.
Chair, if you don't mind, may I answer Councilman Mooney's question?
Please.
So, Councilman Mooney, to answer your question, it's a total of 858 cameras. It's the total, okay, for the, for the entire project of the cameras throughout the city. This 4.4 million is 429 of that 858.
So, do each of these cameras cost $10,000? Is that, no, that's not right.
Each, each of the camera comes out to around $8,500. It's, it's, again, that's the camera.
Oh, that's, that's what, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Wow.
That's the cameras, the installation. And I'm not, I'm not an IT person, so I don't want to pretend to go in to make it jazzy for you, you know. But it, it is the installation, the buying, purchasing the camera itself, it's streaming it to the, facilitating it to stream to the real-time crime center to give us eyes in those locations.
Oh, that's, that's good. Thank you.
And just, once again, if anyone wants to schedule a time, I've actually talked with Director Howard. He is willing to work with us to go to the real-time crime center or wherever in order to look at the camera deployment. I know that that is something very important to this body and to a lot of the council members. I'd ask that you just include me on the email when you set up that time, so that I can know how many people took advantage of that opportunity.
Okay.
And I know that Councilman Bishop and a couple of others would like to do that.
Yes.
So if we could make that happen. Councilman Bishop, you have a point?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I did get the email, Director Howard set up the meeting with the IT department, so I will be doing that on Wednesday. You know what, I, I'm, like, like other members, I do see a need for the upgrade of our equipment for police vehicles and police equipment, and supporting our police to do their jobs in a, in a, in a better fashion. But I, what I am concerned about is that us not investing enough in security cameras, per se. The security cameras are a tool for the police to help fight crime. It's also an assurance from residents that we are, that their neighborhood is, is wired, and we are looking in on their neighborhood, and we are trying to keep them safe. What I don't agree with is that, you know, we are putting our, our dollars in armored vehicles for the police that we may not very use very often. And we are neglecting to put more cameras to make our citizens feel a lot safer than in their communities. So, Mr. Chairman, I do, I, I, I will take, take advantage of this meeting that we have with the Safety Department, but I, I just wanted to be known that, from this member, I think that we need to invest more in security cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Absolutely. And then, Councilman Bishop, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're going to sit with us on Wednesday. And you're going to also, you're also here that there were some cameras in the last six months that have been recently installed throughout your, throughout your ward, the last six months. We believe in the, in, in cameras. The, the eyes and the, the ability to tap into areas where crime is happening is very important, and very important to safety. But with regard to the SWAT, the SWAT vehicle gets used more often than, than most folks know, because our SWAT team is able to use the equipment that it has, and to end these SWAT stand-ups peacefully. The reason why they don't make the news is because it's not, you don't have the, the shooting, and you don't have the fatalities associated with it. But just this, this year, we, we've, we've used it more than 20 times this year. On average, it's around 30 times per year that the vehicle is used, as a factor to protect our SWAT officers, to respond on, on scene, to, to protect the public during the SWAT stand-up, to be a factor that helps with the negotiation process, to have the person on the inside stand down. And its presence itself, it's useful, and yes, it's intimidating, but it's, it's a, that intimidation is a tool to help these SWAT call-ups to end peacefully.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Basir Jones, do you have a point?
Yes, on that point, I want to say to my colleagues, preferably on the east side, you're going to, this investment into the safety is probably one of the most important things that we need to do. Violence is about to end, violence is a, you know, we used to live in a time when violence decreased in the wintertime, but unfortunately, you're going to start seeing violence increase during this winter. And it's been some real evil behavior that's been taking place in our city recently. If you've heard the story of the young girl, Alicia, 22 years old, who was, who was, who was kidnapped, who was tortured, and who was, and who was tortured live on Instagram, right? I mean, you're going to see an increase in violence. And, and our, our, what we have to be able to do is not only invest in material for our safety forces, but it has to be some type of proactive, proactive behavior that we're doing. You know, what we're doing inside the recreation centers, you know, making sure that we're providing the right type of housing in our neighborhoods. We have to be proactive in dealing with violence. Violence is going to, you saw the, we saw that poverty, Cleveland was ranked the most impoverished city in the nation. And that's not because we don't have money, because we have money. But it's that the money and the resources is not reaching the community. It's not reaching the community. So we have to invest, invest in our safety forces, and we have to be proactive in making sure that our recreation centers are providing proactive therapy, you know, youth programming, you know. All of these things are important. And I'm telling you, from my friends who, and Councilman Mooney brought this up before, and he was absolutely correct, that the poverty and violence that you're seeing on the east side is, is not like it's not happening on the west side, because it is happening in pockets of the west side. I'm, I'm, I'm saying this as a, as a, and the safety forces probably know it better, because they're dealing with it every single day. I'm dealing with it in a sense of those family members are reaching out to me. And it's going to increase, it's going to increase. So we have to, you know, at some point, playing politics has to hit reality, which is, these resources need to get out and penetrate the community. But at the same time, as some of my colleagues are saying, it needs to be done in a way that is the most impactful way that it can be. So I just wanted to just, you know, put that out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Much appreciated. Councilwoman, did you have a point on that? Yes, please. The floor is yours.
To the chair, to the, to the Howard, I do agree with Basir Jones, because in our community, violence is serious. I mean, just in my building, the other day, a person was actually murdered in our building. And when you don't have that police front and front in our community, people feel they can do what they want to do. Just this weekend, me in my community, where I live at, in 30th and Central, live in the community, over the weekend, there was three shootings in our community, and I actually heard it. I'm in my bed, and I'm listening to it, and I say, it's going to hit my phone. And it did. And I knew it was in my community, 22nd, 30th, all of my community. And it actually went, actually in my building. We actually live in the building where the person was actually, situation happened in our building. And right inside, I know, we in the building, live in the building, but we don't know what's happening in our building, our own unit. So this is very serious, like Basir Jones says, is the impact in our neighborhood. If you're not reaching our neighborhood and don't have that police force in our neighborhood to care, people are going to do what they want to do, because there's nothing out there to do. There's nothing out there for them to do. So anything left them to do is to, is towards violence, constantly and consistently. So we have to give our community something to go on, something to have, to know that this is all that, that's not worth. We're more than that. In our community, where we live in, in the city, it's more, we work more than that. It's more, it's, we work more than that. So we have to get back to our community to know that there's something out there to hang on to instead of just violence. We're living in it every day. So, um, to say this and say that, we need more, more forces, more police forces, more tentative, more caring, and give us more in our community we can work with instead of just violence that all the people, that's all they have, is violence. So that's all they say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Um, I saw Councilman Slife and then Mooney.
Thank you. And just very quickly, um, and I apologize if I missed the answer to this. What's being proposed with, under 843, Mr. President, is, is one SWAT vehicle. How many vehicles are there currently? I know that we heard about the one that's in disrepair, 20 years old. Do we only have one right now and we're looking to fully replace?
To the Chair, to the Councilman, we only have one large SWAT vehicle. That's the one that's 20 years old. We want to replace it with this one and then we'll, um, I guess scrap the other one.
Thank you. What is, uh, through the, uh, Chair, what's our partnership with, uh, outside police agencies when it comes to SWAT and response? I'm just thinking if the, uh, as the representative of the far west side, if the SWAT vehicle's tied up on East 200th, it's not all that convenient if there's an issue on West 198th. Do, I know the suburbs collaborate close, closely and have interdepartmental, uh, response teams. Do we participate in those as the City of Cleveland?
To the Chair, to the Councilman, yes. Um, we actually have MOUs with what is called Edge. There's three of them with the suburbs, but we also have, um, a working relationship and an MOU with, with the Sheriff's Department. So if a SWAT vehicle, like you said, is out on the east side and we need one on the west side, we can call the Sheriff's Department and/or one of these other agencies to assist us.
And, and briefly, to, to characterize those MOUs, is the expectation of the parties in those agreements through the Chair, that the cities are purchasing the equipment and allowing shared use, or is it a, almost more akin to a shared entity that is buying? And, and what I'm trying to get at is, do we as the City of Cleveland need to be buying SWAT vehicles, or is there a way that regionally we can be more impactful by how, how we purchase SWAT vehicles, how we design those partnerships so that it's not necessary, it's an, it's an intermunicipal, uh, expenditure?
Well, our relationships with our, our law enforcement partners regionally, um, through the MOUs, um, allow us to, um, avoid the over-militarization that everyone is worried about, right? If we were purchasing five, 10 SWAT vehicles, it would be a concern, right? The fact that, um, you know, we have one and we use it when necessary, um, says a lot to, to how calculated the purchase is and how necessary this one vehicle, the one vehicle is. Not, not a need for being over precautious and asking for five, but also being able to lean on our partners to say, you know, when we have a situation where we need some assistance. And our partners have been there for us. I mean, they, they've been there for us for, uh, large events. They're, they're with us for, uh, uh, critical events, um, that happen throughout the city. They're there for us. We, we don't have to call them up on a regular basis for, um, situations like this, um, but we want to make sure that we are, uh, responsive to the people, concerned about over militarization, that we stay inside the box that the people want us to stay in and only lean on our partners when it's necessary.
Thank you. Last question, Mr. Chair. If, uh, within those MOUs, if, for example, and this is just an example, but if, if Cleveland SWAT has to assist in, uh, the City of Brook Park, uh, does the City of Brook Park reimburse the City of Cleveland, uh, for, uh, our costs? Or is, is that how the MOU structured, or is it purely a shared use and it's assumed to be a wash? They'll help us at some point?
So it's a shared, it's a shared use. It's, they're there when, 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 uh, when we need them and we're there when they, when they need us.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And what I, the, the goal of my questions is to understand what of these costs for, you know, we, we have to assume public safety for large regional events, people coming downtown for games, all of these things. At what point, uh, is there a, a regional funding of, of what is being put on the City of Cleveland as, as really a, a regional benefit and not even necessarily a, a City of Cleveland benefit? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mooney?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a two-part question. One is for, um, Commissioner Howard. I was looking at the fire. There's, my, there's no fire vehicles on here, is that right?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. It's just, and just a point of, just Director Howard, I just don't want the record to reflect me as a commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For my purposes, it's okay. Not, no, no offense taken, but the, um, the, the vehicles for fire are purchased out of, out of capital. This, it, it's not eligible for.
Right. Well, that was my second part, I think, because you can't really use ARPA for the fire engines and the pumpers. And that's why there's no fire vehicles here.
Correct.
That, that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Griffin?
Vehicles will be covered, our, our transport units at the end of the year. They did not qualify as ARPA because they have like.
Right. Everything I had read, it was very challenging for vehicles for fire and I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that here and that that was the reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Griffin.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Partnerships with other entities around cameras, can you explain a little bit about how that works? Because I know that everybody's looking at what our capacity is as a city, but how are we leveraging our capacity to get some of these other private and public sector organizations to share their cameras with the real-time crime center?
Sure. So IT as, uh, um, we have the Smart CLE, which is a camera sharing program, um, and it's the, um, I'll just read just briefly the overview. The city's implemented in a video surveillance program consisting of over 1,400 cameras throughout the city known as Smart, uh, Smart, I'm sorry, Safe Smart CLE Video Surveillance Project. The city's cameras program's objective is to increase officer awareness, provide actionable intelligence, prevent crime and enhance residents', uh, and visitor's security and quality of life. So we partner with other, with other businesses, um, who have cameras. Ring doorbell, for example, if a crime happens on someone's street, um, and we're able to see that that person has a ring doorbell, we all ask that person to, to have access to that footage. So it's not just our city cameras, but it's the cameras that, that, that businesses, um, throughout the, throughout the city have. RTA, we partner with RTA and their cameras, CMHA and their cameras. And again, like I said, the, the, the ring doorbells, the smart doorbells throughout the neighborhoods.
So at some point in time, I think it would be good for this council to really know all of the partnerships and how we have a force multiplier with these other, um, agencies and how those agreements or how those, um, shared, um, resources operate.
Sure.
So it'd be great to know that because, once again, um, it's not just what we're able to do. Sometimes we could look at where we have gaps, where there are gaps in the city and other things that we may need to look at as well, okay?
And to that point, Councilman, it's, um, just some more information. The city provided infrastructure hardware which facilitated the integration of over 350 cameras from the NFL, uh, Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority, um, our cameras and the private partners. So just to give you a number for that Smart CLE, Safe, Safe Smart CLE program.
All right, thank you. Couple of other things, uh, the car plan. Does this car plan help us with, I know with the consent decree, we had an, uh, an aggressive car plan that we actually had to abide by. How does this help us reach our goals and objectives with the consent decree, um, that mandated that we would update our car plan and put more cars in rotation?
So these, the vehicles that would be, we, we would be purchasing here would increase and improve the car plan because these vehicles are, would be reliable, right? They would be reliable, they would be in good repair, um, and you have, you have to have a good car plan, but you ought to have, also have to have good personnel. So once we get, um, our safety forces up through recruitment and hiring, we'll have quality cars to put those new officers in, which again, assists our car plan.
Because one of the things that a lot of people do not talk about with the consent decree is that there's been a lot of investments that we committed to, to make sure that we provide better training, better equipment, and all of those things for our officers. So we're making these expenditures. What helps us is that it doesn't come out of our regular capital budget, which gives us more opportunity to do some of these projects that we'd like to see done with our capital budget.
That's right.
So with the money that we don't spend, uh, or that we use these ARPA dollars, it gives us more capacity, uh, to be able to use for other things in our capital budget. So I'd like my colleagues to make sure that they understand that as well. That's very important, um, because, uh, you know, we may be able to be more creative in some of these neighborhood projects and other things that we'd like to see. So keep that in mind. Last but not least, uh, what is the lifespan of the equipment? I'm really, uh, I hear my colleagues and really, uh, understand, but when you have helmets and shields, I think we all want to make sure that our officers are, um, safe and we want to make sure that we give them all of the need, needed equipment that they have. But can you kind of give us the lifespan of some of these, um, um, helmets and shields and other things so that we can kind of have an idea of, of, um, how often we'll be making these expenditures?
To the Chair, to the Councilman, riot helmets typically have a five-year warranty on them. Um, so every five years, we need to replace those. The solo shields themselves, I am not 100% sure if they have, what type of warranty they have. It, it seems that a lot of our equipment has five-year warranties, but I can check on the shields. Those could be a little bit longer, I'm not sure. But most, most of the equipment, protective equipment is approximately five years. That's what the companies give their warranty for.
And, Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that question, are there, um, contractual obligations with the police union and others that mandate that we have this updated gear, um, that we know that it won't, that it won't be antiquated? Also, are there other agreements that we have or liability issues that we open ourself up to if we don't upgrade this gear within the five-year timetable or whatever that you're looking for?
To the Chair, to the Councilman, um, the vests, I believe are contractual, are, are bulletproof vests. The riot helmets, the solo shields, they're not asked, they're not contractual, but if we're, if an officer's out there and they have a, a helmet on that's not under warranty and something happens and they become severely injured, they can come back to the city and that's just in a dis, that's risk management.
There's always that exposure when we, when we are sending off, if we were to send officers out with, you know, known, old, faulty, compromised equipment, there's always that exposure to, to liability.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking those questions is because I know that there's, um, the conversation about militarization of a police department, but we also send our men and women to do some tough jobs. And, um, you know, I for one don't want to be that guy who, um, sends them out with any kind of compromised equipment. Um, and it'd be good to know that kind of, these are expenditures that we're not making because we're trying to be, uh, you know, politically trying to militarize our police department. We're doing the basic needs that we need to provide for our men and women in, um, in our police force. So I'd just like for all of us to really, uh, keep that in mind. And, um, I did hear you say that you will either scrap or decommission the present, uh, vehicle so that won't be in rotation once this new vehicle is actually purchased.
No. That's correct, Councilman.
All right. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions? Councilman, uh, Beshear Jones and Councilman Brankatelli?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Chair to, uh, to the Director, um, I, I see for, um, fire vehicles and equipment, but I don't see anything for the stations themselves. Is that, are you able to put anything in it for, uh, through this, through ARPA to fix up just some of the, the, the fire stations? Is that, is that, are you able to do that?
No, the, the, um, the, there's a, there's a list that we have of, well, first, let me say that the, um, the fire stations wouldn't qualify under ARPA.
Okay.
Um, but we have, um, installed a program that allows, um, fire personnel to route up issues with the fire station and we have, um, pretty quick responses to get things, to get things done and repaired. Roofs, plumbing, um, anything that happens. Um, and as our, you know, we did an annual report last year that talked about the condition of the fire stations, we'll do, do one again, but they're always being, being kept up.
Okay. Um, the second thing is, uh, Chair to the Director, um, within this, um, and I'm, I'm not sure if, are we able to do this, but I'm sure that there's been some police officers who've been affected by COVID as well. Um, I remember a, a couple years back, uh, I helped fund some mindfulness exercises for the police officers. Um, because, just because they're police doesn't mean that they're not affected by COVID and what's everything that's going on as well. Do you have like some proactive, more than just equipment? Can some of the funding go towards mindfulness exercises or therapy or things of that matter?
So we have a wellness program that's, that, that is funded. Um, it's not through the ARPA funds, but, um, we have a wellness program that is funded, Council, and several other council members, you, you know, you, you put some money towards. Uh, Councilman Joe Jones had pledged, um, $10,000 and Councilman's woman Santana had pledged $5,000. And we have to reach back out to, to get those funds to attribute it to our wellness program. And we actually just had a meeting the other day about how to evolve the wellness program using technology as well.
Right.
So once we have that, um, kind of ironed out, we'll know what the ask, ask is for and where it would come from.
Okay. So, uh, just to, just to, um, uh, just to restate my question, i- is it, is, is ARPA dollars able to be used for therapeutic, um, programs for, 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 for those who are in the safety forces? Can that, can those dollars be used for that?
That I, I don't know. I don't believe so, um, but I can check and get back to you with that, Councilman, but I don't, I don't believe the ARPA would qualify for the wellness.
Okay. What do you think? It does?
It does.
Under health? So what I would like to, what I would like to, uh, to, to, to bring to the table is maybe that there's some resources that can be put aside for the health of our officers, EMS, you know, anyone that's in the safety forces. If, if you can, you know, come up with a, a dollar amount that we can put inside it. Because one thing about getting equipment, but, you know, just the, the, the mind frame, that the mental health of our safety forces, uh, cannot be denied. Um, so I would like to, to put an asterisk there and if we can put some money into that, that'd be important.
That's appreciated, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Brankatelli?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I had mentioned this earlier when, when Ann was going through the list of, uh, requests around, uh, safety. One of the, uh, requests, one of the discussions we had when we heard the South High Training piece, um, last week, um, you had mentioned, uh, we had had $5 million set aside for, from our bonding around our new headquarters to invest in South High School. But as we talked about, that, um, that facility's gonna need significant improvements, uh, the, um, when it went through a review by our Mayor's Office of Capital Projects, previously when it was considered for the headquarters at one time and other uses, it, um, Capital Projects noted how much work that that facility needs. You had expressed, um, uh, desire to be in there early next year, start doing training. We have classes coming up. It's a great opportunity. During the hearing, you mentioned that ARPA dollars were eligible for making those improvements. And so, um, I know we don't have estimates, um, yet. Um, they're still going through assessments, they have all the drawings, they have had engineering through that facility. But when the tour occurred down in Columbus, um, looking at their training facility, uh, they mentioned that that facility cost somewhere around $26 million, um, uh, to put together. Um, and so we just wanted to confirm, and we talked about earlier, about potentially sending ARPA dollars aside so that we can get up and running and doing capital improvements so we can get those classes in there early. Um, and then also working with our particular departments, EMS, Fire and Police, as well as the cadets, um, and the school district. Commissioner Jamie DeRosa mentioned around us investing around a half million dollars in those classrooms to get those classrooms up and ready and that will help reduce the cost of what we're paying.
Correct.
Uh, so just was confirming that, um, we're gonna look at, um, how do we set aside dollars, um, so that we can get fully, as, fully operational in phase one. As you mentioned, um, this is a multi-phase project. We're excited about it, um, but it is a, an expenditure that as we take this property on, we want to make sure we can make those capital improvements.
Absolutely, Councilman. And the, the facility in Columbus, the $26 million was, that was 10 years ago, they built it from the ground up. The one thing that is, is, is beneficial to using South High School as a training The one thing that is, is, is beneficial to using South High School as a training facility is that it will not require as much work as it would have needed for headquarters because. It's, it's turning an education facility into a modernized education facility. So that's going to be very helpful. And as we assess the costs, as you just stated, that we don't have that estimate right now because it hasn't passed and we will get that, is that. It is hopeful that under the next round of these funds is that South High School will be included because we'll have much more information to bring to council to answer questions and give definitive responses to.
I like hope. The issue of hope is that we're buying the property now and we're going to own a quarter million square foot building that we know needs significant improvements now. So with hope and with opportunities, we're going to look at how do we make sure we have resources. So as some of us aren't returning next year, we want to make sure that that does not stay a eyesore to the community which it is now. And that we make it fully operational as, as something we can be as proud as Columbus is proud of theirs. Thank you.
Thank Councilman, Councilman Plensick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a pointed question, my other colleagues and to the whoever can answer. Going through the, what, what we're looking at on our, on our screens here. The group or the organization called Journeys, can someone tell me what that is?
Called what?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Called what?
This is not for safety, I, I'm just having a general question.
What was the question?
The, the group Journeys, what, what is that?
Through the Chair to the Councilmen, so Journey Center for Safety and Healing is the former DVCAC organization, so Domestic Violence. Child Advocacy Center, I'm probably mispronouncing that.
Okay.
But they went through a name change during COVID, so that is just their new name.
Okay, and then secondly, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that information. I'm just trying to understand the mechanics for tomorrow's meeting at 9:30. Is what's being presented to us today, is that is what's going to be discussed tomorrow at 9:30?
As far as the.
What's being presented to us, the areas of agreement? So there'll be no opportunity to inject anything else into this, or this is what we're discussing tomorrow?
Councilman Brancatelli, this is on the agenda for tomorrow, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
So are we going to vote on these by line item, how are we going to vote on this stuff? I'm trying to understand the mechanics here.
So there will be a, there will be a voting committee, there'll be a voting finance committee and there'll be a vote on the floor.
So tomorrow is just before DPS?
Correct.
Then it's going to come back to finance?
Correct.
Okay, so let's, let's say like expanding the storefront program. Okay, are we going to vote on that line item? Are we going to vote on each line item?
I don't believe so, but I'll, Councilman Brancatelli.
So the notion for tomorrow is going to be, let's, let's go over all the additional that wasn't covered under safety. And talk about each one of these items that were presented. We can also talk about what was presented by some of the other agencies that came over and make presentations. And then we can have discussion about how we want to proceed from there on whether or not we give a rose to the Director and he moves on. But we want to be able to have that robust discussion around what's everything on the table, so that we get our arms around it and then go from there.
Okay, because I'm, I'm trying to understand this because obviously there's some areas that, well, again, it was mentioned earlier like the storefront program. I mean, 200, only 250,000 versus something as critical as a storefront program as we know how small businesses have been affected. And then obviously we're supplying in a form of a grant, 9 million to private developers at the same time. You know, we're only setting aside or it's recommending being set aside like for expansion of the home repair program of only 3.6 million. So I, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to vote on these, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be able to vote on each, I'd like to vote on the line items.
And, and those are the discussions we can have, I think part of that discussion, for instance, on the storefront program. As the, as Chief Dumas stated, there are other sources that come into play that aren't part of ARPA.
I understand.
So we can look at what's some of the carryover, very, very similar to how we do CDBG every year. Where we have $30 million in CDBG and we start looking at what's carried over, what's the demand? You know, putting money into a, a particular line item that may not be able to use those dollars within the timelines that we have for ARPA spend down as well as what we haven't absorbed already. So we know we've had storefront program carryover for the past number of years, which is why we hadn't funded it that way.
But again, I want to strongly recommend that we vote on these five line items so there's consensus. So with the final package that comes with ours, we all might not like it, but at least there's consensus as it pertains to the individual line items that we're going to support.
Yeah, I think we may not get consensus on all items, but I think we could have agreement that these are the priorities to get resources as we move forward on this first phase of, of the funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank Councilman. One point for Councilman Griffin?
Sure, just, just briefly, just so I can make sure we understand, if we were to vote on them line item and I don't know if our attorney is here. Would, would somebody have to put forth a motion for us to do that, or will we just be able to just on the call of the Chair?
If it's going to be amended from the original legislation, there would need to be a motion, a second, and, and we don't have to do. We don't have to go word by word, we can put forth a bucket of amendments.
All right, because keep in mind, the, the challenge with this is that everything from the health side to the safety to the catalytic projects is all in one bill. So that's what makes it a little bit more challenging because if we had them in different pots, then we probably would be able to move them a lot more easy, but.
Yeah, and that's, on that point, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I mean, again, using the analogy of CDBG. When we would have the executive summary be part of the legislation, it would be similar to CDBG where we would have an executive summary, summary, whether it's amended or whether it goes in as is, would be part of the attachment for the file.
And Mr. Chair, I'm asked if Director Dumas can wrap us up?
Councilman Jones has one more point before we wrap up.
But on that point before Director Dumas comes up, I did want us to recognize that a lot of these are time sensitive, we only have about three more meetings. And we need to make sure that we really push some of these agenda items because it's time sensitive. And for example, when we're talking about purchasing vehicles, if we don't start ordering those with supply chain issues and other things, we're going to run into a huge problem. So I also want to thank Ann Tilly for really kind of pulling together all of these different streams. To give us at least a document that we can move and start to try to vote on, okay?
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
I totally, to the Chair, I totally agree with that, I understand, I understand Councilman Plensick's. I understand his, his thought process in regards to it, but it's as simple as us just looking at it and just looking at it and saying what we like, what we don't like and having discussion, but. I don't see a problem with voting on it collectively after we've had the discussion, but sitting and, and voting and having a discussion on each line item. I think that we would end up doing that anyway without having to separate it and, and, and pass it piece by piece. Rather than passing it in a way that we all come to an agreement, we like what we like, the thing that we don't like, we scratch out, the thing that we do like, we, we keep in there. And then from there, we, we pass it, we, we have to get these resources out into the streets. And, and I think that's very important, I think everybody agrees with that, by the way, I know that we all have residents who are hurting right now, who needs resources right now. Or city workers or officers that need resources right now, so I think that we all agree on that, I think that we're all being sensible. I understand Councilman Plensick's frame of mind in regards of why he's saying that, because he wants to get the, he wants to get the best thing done, I get, I get that. But I believe that we can have that discussion and pass it in bulk quickly without having to piecemeal the process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank Councilman. Chief Dumas, do you want to wrap this up with some words of inspiration?
So to the Council President and the members of the body, I actually just wanted to reiterate something that I've shared with council already. Because of Councilwoman Spencer's question about what happens if we don't use this money by the year end, we don't lose it, we don't lose it, right? So here's what's happened, at the federal level, someone through their own evaluation determined that the city of Cleveland was in crisis. And that that crisis was related to the pandemic and in addition to our economic shutdowns of our businesses. Our poverty level, our inability to house people, evictions. And they decided in their own criteria that we were the eighth most impacted in the United States. And that's how we came upon this $511 million, which I know surprised this body because it surprised me, okay, that we would be getting it. And I was afraid to call to ask if they had made a mistake, because if they made a mistake, I want to keep the money. But, so what happens is that if you're in crisis, they expect that you move quickly because you have a crisis. So I'm not suggesting anything, get past hurried or any of that, but I am suggesting that if you think about it for a year, okay, there is a process that happens. So they are currently structuring our evaluation process and they enhance it almost daily. So when you put your money into certain programs, there's going to be a reporting that takes place either once every 60 days or once a quarter. And you're going to have to show the impact of what you put that money into, that it's moving in the direction that you meant it to go to. So you can't just allocate it and say we allocated it and leave it there, it has to be implemented. And what happens, not only in this, but what happens in every grant and this one, someone's going to come along and say Cleveland didn't spend their money. Or so and so didn't spend their money and they're going to go back to the cities and say who's ready with your programs for this. And they're going to move funds because that's what they do. Away from your program into somebody who is expending those funds in accordance with eligibility. I know there's a lot of consideration, there always is, for kind of a, and even expendering, expending around, you know, every community. Every community is just not impacted in that way. You'll probably be able to do business assistance in the form of grants. If you're in a community that's not severely impacted by poverty, housing, evictions, can't pay utility bills. You'll probably be able to use some of the funding that goes to small businesses, that gets them back on their feet, those grant programs that do that. But you're probably not going to see some of the things that are eligible in other areas that are more adversely impacted, and that's just the reality. So I don't want to give a sense that you can ponder a long time and it won't have an effect on us. I also don't want to give a sense that you should pass something that you're not, okay, just I want to have a, have you have a realistic look at what those possibilities are. We were to do our next tranche of reporting, which is where you are, right, December. They moved it out to January because a couple of cities called and said, hey, you know, we got to have time to get our programs, da, 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 and so they moved it to January. What they'll expect in that January reporting is a status of where you are. What have you done? What have you allocated? What have you done? So I just want to keep in mind of this council and everybody who's dealing with this, that it is crisis money. And it's crisis related to COVID, economic development, and we're the eighth most adversely impacted city by all of those stats throughout the United States. So I just wanted to make sure that I keep that in the forefront and you do have a second tranche coming. And so you, it, you can, you know, do something meaningful with the first and then you have more time to think or, you know, get something additional. But I, I would encourage that, you know, if we get this money that you, that you spend it. And because we do have needs and so that we don't have that, that to have to, to face by way of examination. We also track all the other cities that got large amounts of money. We check kind of on, on the Treasury website because you have to upload your information to the Treasury website. So we check their progress to see if we're like even Steven or if somebody else is in the same boat, so we can know if we're kind of falling behind or if our reports have been received or if somebody else is really running way ahead of us. And we'll continue to report that to council as those, as to what they look like, but that information is available to you too. You can go to the Treasury website and look at other cities that got large amounts and see where they are in their processing of these funds. So that's all I wanted to say to the body.
Yeah, quick comment and thank you, Chief. I think, you know, having been on both sides, both in the nonprofit world as well as here, and looking at how CDBG dollars are monitored and the compliance side of that, I think we can't lose sight of the complexity of how hard that is. And that these dollars are under heavy scrutiny and that you have to put in a request to be able to use the dollars to the monitor. That monitor has to approve them, it has to come back to us, so all of the, the timing of that makes it a challenge. And the fact, I think your point, the Chairman, that the circulars that come up basically daily that say, here's what you can use it for, here's what you can't use it for, this is all evolving. So it is a moving target in that sense, but what's most important is that we identify categories that we can submit to the monitor to make sure they approve the, the direction that we're going in. So the early things that got thrown out like vehicles or fire equipment or other uses gets defined as we're going along. And just to remind folks, it got defined all the way to the point, we started at 540 million and we're now down to 511. And I can't say enough of how well the city has partnered with other agencies. When I look back at NSP dollars, when I look at some of the recovery funds, we were the beneficiaries of getting recaptor dollars. Because we spent demolition money quickly, because we were prepared, we were able to pass all the tests through NSP one, NSP two, we got reallocation. So being able to be calculated, functioning, that we can use, spend the money down in the timelines is an advantage that we have with a very functioning department. So congratulations to your department for being able to move those dollars out. But we have to be laser focused to be able to get these in timely enough, have that monitor approve them. So the process is not as easy as us checking a box, it's us, you guys putting the, the packages together to make sure they're eligible and then we can have a system that can spend down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through the Chair to Chief Dumas, I want to thank you for your comments. I, I do have a lot of faith in this body that we will get meaningful legislation passed in the next couple of weeks upcoming here, so I think that we will take action, I'm really looking forward to that. However, I think back to our very earliest discussions about these dollars and to me, one of the messages that came across loud and clear. Is that the dollars must be obligated by December 31st, 2024 and expended by December 31st, 2026. And so I think it is this balance of we don't want to feel so much time pressure that we don't make strategic decisions while at the same time acknowledging these are crisis dollars. So I, I feel that with our colleagues, we're going to be able to strike that balance, but I, I've heard from a lot of testimony provided to this working group that. One of the watchwords was be thoughtful, so I think we'll get there, but just wanted to re-verify through the Chair to the Chief, is, are my dates accurate?
Mr. Chair, the Councilwoman, those dates are accurate, but as Councilman Brancatelli just identified, there are processes in the middle that have to take place. And those processes will take some time to get groups in place, reporting in place, software in place, they're actually putting together what we need to adopt by way of software. So it doesn't mean that you have to 2024 to obligate funds, you have to make some decisions and then we have to actually implement. Okay, and we're going into 2022 and I don't have to tell you how quickly that happens, what you don't want to have. And I understand thoughtful and all that, you don't want to have not spent or obligated these funds to a process when you receive the second half. Because there's going to be an evaluation process then. Okay, so you don't want to have received $255 million and be a city that's in crisis. And then when your second tranche comes, you've not obligated those funds. So there is a process and I'm going to be real clear on it. So we read the regulations and we believe that by these certain sections, and I, councils receive them, the regulations are currently that thick, okay, and they're getting thicker and thicker and thicker. There's always competition between cities, there's always a look at why did they get, nobody comes like and, you know, and says it, but people are paying attention. And so what happens is that when we receive proposed, proposals for spending, we go through the regulations, we have law go through the regulations. We have an external firm that works in this area and is working with other major cities and we send it to them for an approval. We also send it to the US Treasury, we also draw in the auditor's office. Because the worst that could happen is that we spend $100 million and then have to give it back because it didn't, wasn't eligible. So we actually do those extra steps. So there's not a, there's, there, there, first of all, you want to identify that you are in crisis, that's why you got the money. Okay, so you want to make those decisions and give us process time for implementing and actually expending those. So when you start talking about home repairs or seniors or, all those programs have to be in place. When you're talking about rental assistance, all those programs have to be in place, you have to have capacity to kind of do that. So we're questioning some of the agencies that currently do these now, that have like $5 million, $10 million from other programs and we're looking at their performance. And I'm going to say here at the table, until we started to like reach out and ask for verification, did you do the rental subsidies? Did you do this and that? Some of their processes have been changed and that's a good thing, okay, so that the money can get into the community. So yes, you have to be obligated and expended, obligated by '24, expended by '26, but there's lots of issues in the middle. So, and again, you don't want to be in a position that it doesn't look like you really need the funding because we really do.
Right.
Okay.
One more brief comment through the Chair to the Chief, thank you so much, Chief Dumas. I think that also to my colleague, Councilman Brancatelli, I know we've beat this to death, we've heard these numbers so many times. But again, I think as we're going in, tomorrow's really a big day at DPS with a lot of discussion. So we, the first tranche was 255 million, but we've already taken 108 of that for revenue recovery, 20 million for broadband, 5 million for food bank. So again, what we're talking at about tomorrow is. So again, what we're talking about tomorrow is about 122 million. So again, we got to, there's so many moving parts, that as long as we can stick together, I'm not afraid to ask the dumb questions, so that's why I'll be there tomorrow.
No questions.
So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Chief Dumas.
I might be getting a little cold tonight, but I might not...
If there's nothing else for the good of the order?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss not to, I thank the chief for all her great work, but two departments, Community Development Director Wackers and Economic Development Director Ebersol, we went through a horrible pandemic of complete shutdown, they still did hundreds of contracts to help our small businesses, to help our CDCs, the nonprofits that were implementing those rental programs, that is a Herculean effort to do, to triple the number of contracts you've ever done, to be able to get these resources out. So we have, you know, we do need to be mindful of what it takes to operationally do this, so I wanted to make sure we didn't leave without thanking them for their efforts.
Thank Councilman Brankatelli. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned, I'll send some of you at 2 o'clock, and everybody at 7.